All right, I'm going to open this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, December 9th, 2019. And before we begin, if you please all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States as America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, do we have manifests?
We do.
Do we have manifests?
Make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifests of December 13 and December 16th, and the payroll manifest of December 17th.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Anamis? Oh, the min- yes, right. Okay. All right, next up, we have minutes for December 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December 9th, second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments or corrections?
I think you got them all, you got what I sent you today.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Anamis? All right, reports from assigned boards and committees, budget?
There's no meeting.
No meeting last week? Okay. So that the last meeting was the one, John, you were there for the budget presentation?
Right.
You'd already briefed us on that last week, right? Okay, all right.
Because they were supposed to meet again, but they didn't.
Right. They canceled. Okay. All right, planning board?
Planning board, we met last Wednesday, and just had a few developers that were in here giving instructions on what to come back with the next time they came back.
I can't hear you.
Oh, want me to say it again?
Yeah.
Okay, we had a few developers came in, and they were instructed on what to bring back with them the next time they came.
Okay. No, are they looking at any proposed, anything to put on the ballot this year?
Oh, yeah, we've been working on that before in the previous meetings.
Okay.
Got the Stratford Regional people.
Yeah.
Working with them, and they're almost there.
Okay, we'll get a brief on that when it's, when they're ready to, okay. Okay, CIP?
Meeting tomorrow night.
Meeting tomorrow. All right, 300th committee?
Haven't met.
No, okay, Marston?
Uh, yeah, so as I said last week, we've kind of stopped, we've done as much as we could. Cheryl Smith was here and did indicate that she saw some evidence of erosion that needed to be addressed, and we had some folks out there this week that do see some things that need to be taken care of, and so Chris is going to be working to try and determine, like, if it needs to be taken care of by the company that did all of the work out there so far, if it's part of their contract, or if it's something that we can take care of. But there is no one issue, and we are looking to address it as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, town administrator report?
Just two things, but heavy ones. The boiler for this building is apparently reaching the end of its life. We came into the season saying, geez, we're kind of nervous about it. Got a big leak last week in the main, well, it's not a tank, but the main body of the boiler. I wouldn't call it gushing, but it certainly wasn't dripping. We, our HVAC company put some leak stop in it, but it's, that's really just a Band-Aid. It's dripping again today, so we've got them working on some proposals for what to do with it, either to try and repair it or to replace it. Got another vendor working up proposals for replacement that I'm expecting back this week, so I may be back to you at your next meeting with something of a replacement. I think it's probably, we've been, we've been waiting for this for a long time, we've been putting money aside for it for a long time. I think we've probably put enough into this one, our guys will take one more look at it, and I think they're going to recommend the same. Repairing it might, we might get a Band-Aid out of it for a year or two, but we might also, it might also be catastrophic, you know, sometimes you start to fix it and it gets worse, so the, the options are, replace it with something similar, replace it with, we'll probably look at propane, we'll look at two smaller units to run them in series, which is common for applications this size. I don't know what the options are going to look like when we get them back, but I'll share those with you. If you know anybody in the HVAC game that can handle something of this size, let me know as soon as possible. We obviously don't want to be in a, you know, absolute failure situation when we're working on it, so we want to move on it. Depending on what we decide to do and how we want to pay for it, we may also want to move on it during this calendar year, because we have some funds that we might be able to use for it, so.
Between what we have saved and what we might be able to take out of this year's budget, would we have enough for a new one, or would there still be a delta?
Yeah, I think we're, I'm not worried about the money side, I mean, it's going to be expensive, but we've, we've got about, I think, $36,000 in that emergency reserve fund that we've been building up for events like this. We've got surplus in the operating budget for 2019, and we've got that special appropriation from the legislature of 36, 38,000 that is at your disposal until the end of the year.
Okay.
So, you know, not, no, no budget impact per se, it's, you know, still cash, but, but I think we're going to want to move on it. Tony and I just went down and looked at it, and it's dripping again.
It's bleeding right now.
Yeah.
So if we have the money and we've already set aside on it, why don't we just do it?
That's, we've, you know, we've been limping along, and okay, it's, you know, a thousand bucks here and a thousand bucks there to keep it running, but it's, it's time, and...
Yeah, because the building's not going anywhere.
Right. Yeah. The, the air handling system behind it seems to be working pretty well, so it's just the boiler. And, you know, there's, there's a lot more we could do in terms of efficiency and redundancy, and so I think it'll be a good move in the long run, but we've, we've reached that point.
Yep.
What's the age of that boiler? Is it original to the building?
I think it may be second one in this building, this building's, the core of this building's pretty old, so I think that is a 70s vintage, I think the last time I saw anything on it. It's...
It's time.
It's time.
It's time.
But again, if you, if you know anybody that wants to look at it quick, I mean, I've got two good vendors on it, but I'd be happy to listen to others if you know anybody that's in that arena on a relatively quick turnaround. So, I'll keep you posted on that. Second thing, we can, we can loop back around on in general business if you want, but I just stuck this in your, this is in your folder, I just finished it today with some new financial information. Also, in a couple of weeks, we're going to come back with some suggestions for encumbrances of 2019 money. Most of it around our ongoing road projects, Ledge Farm is going to be under budget for this year's work by probably 15,000 or so, but we do have top coat to go on what we did this year. We have engineering to do for the remainder of the road. We have the top coat for Canton Court and South Summer Street, which we did the base of this year. Those are all things that we're under contract for, we have the money in this year's funds for, so we just want to encumber those and finish those projects next year with this year's money. And then some other things that we've been talking about, some are more CIP related, and some are an effort to pull things out of next year's budget, because we know we're, we're high where we sit right now. Those include the gravel pit assessment, the borings, and the evaluation of what we got left in there and what it's worth. The heating system at the highway garage, that waste oil furnace that we sink a couple thousand bucks in maintenance in every year, we're getting quotes on propane replacement for that. That's in the budget right now for 2020, at least it's in the first draft of the budget for 2020, it's been in the CIP for a year or two. The Kelsey Road culvert that is probably going to have to turn into a bridge, we need to do some engineering to get in line for state bridge aid for that, we don't know what our odds are on that, but that's looking like a four or five-year out on that, but to even get in the mix for that, we've got to get some engineering done. We talked about the highway radio repeater that's in John Farnold's barn, and we have a couple other smaller things around PD hardware that we'll need for the mobile data terminals next year, maybe we can do those early and get, you know, these are things that we're, we kind of need to do, pay for them this year, take them out of next year's budget, and make next year's budget a little easier.
What's the aid application?
To, to get state bridge aid.
You have to apply.
Yeah, so like, think of a red list bridge, right, so you've got to, you've got to apply for state aid for that.
Okay.
This isn't a bridge right now, so it doesn't qualify, that's a culvert. What we need to do is the hydrology, the study of the water flowing under it to determine if it's too, too big to be a culvert by current standards, and if, if it is, if it needs a big enough pass-through that needs to be a bridge, then we could become eligible for bridge aid from the state.
So the $10,000 is for?
Engineering.
Engineering, okay.
To get that hydrology work done.
Got it, got it.
And the bridge aid application done.
Okay.
So, we know we've got to, we've got to replace it, we're probably, between now and when the bridge aid, if it ever materializes, we're probably going to need to shrink that travelway there, the, the guardrails are shot, we're probably going to need to take that down to one lane once the state starts paying attention to it, so we know that's on the, on the horizon, if there's bridge aid, we'll wait, if not, we've got to, we've got to get it into the CIP, but it's going to be a big number, so we really need the bridge aid to, to get it done. Six figures, a few times, it's big numbers, so. So we conveniently have a meeting just before the end of the year, if you want to talk through any of these either tonight or in the next couple of weeks, let me know, and I'll give you more details on those things. But encumbrance decisions we have to make before year-end, and we have to have things under contract, so it would be a, you green light it, and I enter into contracts the next day.
So that gives you enough time if we do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll have it all ready to go.
Okay.
It's just a question of authorization more than paperwork.
Okay.
But if there's anything in there that you, that you're not comfortable with, or you want more detail on, let me know, and I'll reprioritize it. We're still, we're looking good for the operating budget for the year, so we have room to do this, and we have those other little pots of money from the legislature that we can put in the mix for this, too, so. This all sets up finishing up our roadwork from this year and tackling the remainder of Ledge Farm for next year. So that's a final decision you'll have to make in the budget process, but that's, this is all pointing towards finished Ledge Farm in 2020. That's plenty.
All right, general business, I think that we had set aside our road standard discussion to give Donna and Charlene a chance to work on some details, some particulars.
Charlene and I are meeting Wednesday morning for the first time.
Okay. All righty, we are a little ahead of schedule, so we'll move right on to the school board.
Yeah, if they're ready, unless you want to...
Do you have everyone, or are you waiting?
Actually, we are waiting for Sue, she has the facilities crewed, so.
Okay. Romeo.
You do Romeo.
Yeah.
Oh, there's Sue.
Yes, just in time.
Just in time, all right, well.
Romeo, whatever you want.
All right, you, Romeo, you want to come on up?
Thank you.
Yeah, come on up, give them a few minutes to get settled.
Sure.
I'm going to let Romeo, you know, talk while you guys get organized.
John, will you start those around? I'll just wait a minute for those papers to be passed out, notes from what I'll be saying. So, we're talking about the USA, the former USA Springs property. This property has not generated property taxes to the town in Nottingham for quite some time, I'm not 100% certain what it might be, but I'm estimating six to nine years. Does anybody know, Chris, how long property taxes have not been paid by that property?
At least nine.
At least nine. I'm also estimating that more than $1 million is owed to Nottingham from the delinquent property taxes, legal fees, interest and costs, and, and thank you, Chris, for, you also suggested that to me in the past. The property was marketed with the Kane Company out of Portsmouth while it was in bankruptcy for three years. For two years, it was marketed at $2 million, for one year, it was marketed at $1 million, and as far as I know, there's only been one offer made on the property while in bankruptcy, which was rejected. Now the property sits as an attractive nuisance, which is a legal term, ready for someone to trespass on the property, fall down, injure themselves, and file suit against Nottingham for thousands of dollars. There are no fences, nor even signs indicating no trespassing, not that I've seen, maybe there have been some put up. On the site, there would be no affirmative defenses to an interloper being injured and filing suit. I have made an offer for $450,000 to purchase the property. You have options, the first one, A, you could accept the offer, sell the property, put it back on the tax rolls within a very short period of time. The offer is made for all of the property on the Nottingham side of the Nottingham-Barrington boundary. The USA Springs property also was partially in Barrington, and obviously, I can't make an offer for the Barrington property through you, because that would be up to Barrington to decide what they want to do. That would include roughly 170 plus or minus acres, I'm not exactly certain what it is, because I don't know how much was in the Barrington part, and how much is in the Nottingham portion, including a steel skeleton of a partially erected building, that building was approximately 170,000 square feet. Right now, it's, I'm sure you've all seen it at one time or another, it's really just the posts and some crossbeams and sheet metal on the, where the roof would have been started. And I would expect that the town would allow me to continue the construction once we have provided approvals from licensed contract, the structural engineers. There's a two-story house converted to an office, it's in very bad condition, part of the roof has collapsed, so it's easy to get into if, if somebody wanted to get into it, and it's a very bad nuisance, a very bad attractive nuisance. There are also two freestanding buildings and a cell tower. I would make covenants in the offer to not export water drawn from the aquifer. The buyer may plans to utilize the skeletal building for RV storage, recreational vehicle storage, and the remainder of land would be in a benign use as a solar farm with walking trails. This will not impact the cost of operation of the town of Nottingham, there'd be no new families needing schools or services, there'd be minimal fire and police protection needed, and will add to the property tax base once in operation. Seller of the property, two to me, would not incur any real estate brokerage or sales commissions to the, of any sort to the town of Nottingham, it's an offer directly to you, not through a real estate. Or B, you could go to an open bid auction-type sale, it could be conducted by somebody like Jim St. Jean, who does this quite often around the state, he's located in Epping, not too far from here. And understand that when you have an open auction, it would probably be an absolute auction, absolute meaning whatever the high bidder is, that's the price that you sell it at, which may come in at above or below my offer, but it would be, you get what you, what the highest bid is. Generally, in a tax lien sale, there's 30 days for the buyer to come up with the remainder of the money after posting a deposit, and 30 days is not much time to, to conduct good due diligence. The buyer would not be able to obtain title insurance, because the property, the, the foreclosure of the tax lien would have taken place less than 10 years. New Hampshire law allows that. Anytime 10 years after a property's been seized by a town, it's deemed adequate for getting title insurance on the property, anytime before that could be questioned. So whomever the buyer might be will not be able to obtain title insurance on an auction at the tax lien sale. Also, the auctioneer usually charges a fee in the range of 12% to the buyer. Now, the town would not have to pay that 12%, but the buyer would, and that will impact the price that the buyer would be willing to pay for the property, naturally, 12% on top of whatever the high bid would be. The next page is the actual copy of the offer that I made to Chris Sterndale with regards to the property, it's in the amount of $450,000. If accepted, I would put a $50,000 deposit and have my attorney draw up, this is more or less a notice of intent, as opposed to a real purchase and sale agreement, I would have an attorney draw up a purchase and sale agreement, which could then be submitted to the town attorney, and back and forth a couple of times to make it that everybody understands what the offer is about and who pays what. There's no brokerage commission involved in the property, and I buy it in its present condition. Exhibit A indicates that the front portion of the lot, which is the part along Highway 4, is where the skeletal building is located, and I would be using that as a storage location. The back portion, or the part that abuts against Barrington, would be more involved in a solar farm, and I think I forgot to put on there that I would also put in some walking trails, so that people could walk around the solar farm to some of the ponds and things that are back there. Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold and I'm having a little trouble. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Chris, can you just elaborate for me on the whole title insurance?
The, I am not familiar with the title insurance 10-year thing, that rings familiar, that is different than the, what you may be thinking of, the repurchase rights, which are a three-year window?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, no, I, no, I get that, I understand that, it's just, what's the, if he's saying buyer will not be able to ensure the purchase with a title insurance, what does that mean to us?
Title, well, anytime you borrow money, usually the lender wants some assurance that the title is clean and that what you're buying is really yours.
Yep.
So what title insurance provides is that surety that, you know, the, the title insurance would come with a title search, and typically, the tax-deeded properties are very challenging to get title insurance on, because there are a lot of ways you can contest them, and a lot of, you know, it's, it's dirty title.
Okay.
Romeo probably knows that world better than I do, but...
You're absolutely right.
Fair.
You got it, Chris.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So just general process note for you, you, you can, any sale, for starters, any sale of real estate is something you can discuss in non-public, so you don't, if you wish to discuss it in non-public, this offer or any other, whatever, that's, that option is there for you. The, I'll stop there, you can...
Okay, yeah.
Do with it what you wish, but I...
Probably going to do that tonight. Does anyone else have any questions for Romeo?
And where are we, Chris, like, with that three-year window, that expires on, what is it, April?
April of 2020.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No?
Come on, John.
I've never seen the property, I've never actually walked on it, I've never actually been to it, so...
Really?
I'm, if I was going to make any comment, I'd rather have a chance to go and take a peek at it, at least see what, what we're talking about for a property.
You should.
You know, because I'm, I'm looking at the town map here, I know where the cell tower is, I see the trail going out there, and I see property six, I see property nine, I don't know who property one is, but whatever, or seven, and property 10, I know the vacant house you're saying is probably on property nine, and 10's the nice buildable thing, which I presume that's where the steel building, or steel frame is on, right? Property 10?
Yeah, I think so.
The easternmost parcel, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Remember the order of...
Yeah, property 10, yeah, that'd be the easternmost parcel.
Yeah.
You know?
All right.
Your hands.
Yep, so I, I know you gave us this offer a while ago, and, you know, you haven't heard back from us yet, we have been considering a number of... We have been considering a number of options and other proposals for what to do with the site over the past year or two. Part of, part of our hesitation was just mentioned about the, there's a three-year window for repurchase rights, where the previous owner can, you know, if he so chooses, come up with the money and buy the property back.
That would be something that I would have to worry about. However, in this scenario, we'll just say, what if I bought it before the three years are over? And then, in the last minute, Rotundo, who is the fellow that was behind USA Springs, wanted to come back and redeem. He would have to make an offer to the town for all of the delinquent property taxes, all the penalties, all the fees, legal fees, and interest, which Chris has suggested will be over a million dollars. And then, if that were the case, and Rotundo actually did come up with that kind of money and wanted to redeem, then you would just be saying to me, Romeo, the guy came over and redeemed. So we'll give you back your money because now we're getting his money. That would be my problem with regards to if I was gonna put any money into the property before the three years' right of redemption. I would be putting time and studies into it. I've already had an engineer to look at the steel building. He needs to get up and look at it closer with a man lift. Also, the electrical portion, I've talked to Eversource with regards to whether or not the electric wires that are going to the building now, that go to actually a big transformer, would be enough to handle the load coming from the property with a solar farm built. And so, these are things I would be doing as normal due diligence until that three-year right of rescission, and then I would be progressing from there. But the three-year right of rescission would mean if I bought it before, I would have to agree to turning it back over to you for what I paid for it if somebody came in to redeem with the million dollars or so that it would cost. And I'm okay with that.
We are making money off lot six with the cell tower, aren't we?
Yes.
So it's a profitable piece. Not a lot, but it's something.
Right. My read of your ability to sell is that you need to go through by 80, I already say 80, 88, I think it is. And town meeting has weighed in for Nottingham. I believe you have to offer it publicly first, and then you have the right to engage in a private sale. You've got to go through some kind of public auction or bid process, which is where you've been hesitant to flush out that prior owner. So if, we'd have to go back and look at it in a little more detail, but I don't know that you can go straight to a private sale without doing that.
Anyway, so as you can see, there's some uncertainties there, so things we've got to look into. We're, you know, obviously not ready to give you an answer tonight, and I'm sorry we've had to make you wait like this.
Somehow, I didn't think you were gonna sign a contract tonight.
Yeah.
Is there, just another question. I mean, since there's three lots that we're talking about, and there are listed as three different lots, you know, what is the value of lot six? That's what has the marshland on it, that has the, is that just being, you know?
They would, they have value all together, but not in their separation. One of them is called the bowling alley because it's so long and skinny.
Right, and you have the big one right next to it, lot 10.
Sure, but...
Beautiful square, which has the building on it, which you're gonna need for the RV store. It has, from what you listed, has a lot of the benefits.
Yes.
And towards the lot six, doesn't seem, I mean, the town's making money off it with the cell tower, and not a lot again, but it's still...
It's all nice to put it all together.
There may be, with that cell tower lease that we entered into last year, the, we've got to provide passage to that. You know, you gotta retain access to it. That may muddy, you know, which lot, that may traverse more than one of those parcels. There are things like that that we, we've always thought of the three parcels as kind of one thing. In your discussions, you've always thought of them as all that. They had different packages of ownership coming out of bankruptcy, so we will have to be ready to treat them as they are drawn, at least for the first stages of any kind of sale.
That's three drop pieces.
That's three separate things. You could sell them, you could require that they all be sold together somehow, but the three different ownership, prior ownership groups could theoretically come back for different bites of it. It's not realistic to think that would happen, but they were legally different at the time we owned them. They were owned by different entities, so they have to stay that way, at least for the short term. You could probably redraw the lot lines in the future if you wanted to. Or abolish them, make them one big piece if you want.
And regarding the access to the cell tower, I'm sure that easement has been engineered and drawn up on that.
Yeah, but I don't know what the, the uncertainty is, how detailed was that easement? Is it just a right of access, or is it a specific path of access? And that I don't know off the top of my head, but...
That would be worked out.
I think we kept it as loose as we could to give us the flexibility for today. I think it is loose, but I haven't read it in a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey Romeo, while we have you here, how is the barn restoration project going?
You would be surprised how difficult it is to find people that can do window replacements for that barn. I have searched high and low, and I've gone to the New Hampshire, I always screw it up. The group out of Concord that does the Seven to Save. I don't want to say New Hampshire Historical Society because that's not it. I always get it wrong. But I've gone to them, and they've got a list of people that do work on windows, and I've called many of them. Most of them are not interested in that larger project. I'm having trouble with it, I'll tell you quite frankly. And so much that I'm looking into learning how to build the windows on my own and restore them. You don't, you can't just go down and buy those kind of windows at Lowe's or Home Depot unless you want a vinyl. And vinyl would destroy the integrity of the barn, so they have to be out of wood. And they're just, I'm just, or I could try and re-glaze what I've got. Some of the windows are so rotted out that they would have to be rebuilt or replaced with a wood single-hung six-over-six window. It's just, I'm having a real tough time finding it. So, you know what a router is, everybody? You can get a router bit that will, in essence, cut out the outside portion of the window. And then you have to get another bit that will cut out the portion where it joins. Then you have to have the, I think they're called styles, put in, and then you put in the glass and the glazing. And really, that's about where I think I'm gonna wind up going because it's just very difficult to get any contractor that does that stuff.
For the benefit of the rest of the members of the board, there is a, and you correct me, because I'm probably not gonna describe it.
Barn preservation easement.
There is a barn preservation easement, which essentially offers, provides for a tax credit, right, for money spent on restoring a barn. And it was two years ago?
I'm not sure. I thought it was a year ago, but I could be wrong.
I think it was at least two years ago that we approved that for Romeo and his barn, and that is valid for...
10 years.
10 years?
My guess was five, but...
Yeah, okay.
10 seems to come to mind.
Yeah, okay. So that's the only reason I was asking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, sure.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
You too.
All right. If the school board's ready, we'll be happy to have you come up.
You want them up here, Tony, or?
Yeah, might as well.
How many are they? Four, three?
Three. You can actually come join us up here at the...
You wanna sit up here?
Yeah.
I know it's a stupid one, but the stupid one's bugged me.
Oh, Steve, you're gonna have to do a panoramic photo this time. Is that what that is? All right, let's continue with that current subject.
Steve, is that thing a phone, too?
No, this is, maybe for younger people, this is called a camera.
Camera?
A camera.
Can you make calls on it?
Look, I did break down. I was forced to get one of these things. I don't know how to use it yet.
Ask your grandson.
Good answer.
All right, so before we start, just introduce yourselves to the folks at home, and then you can have the floor.
Hi, I'm Rosalind Chaufta, and I'm the Nottingham School Board.
Kathy Brosnan from the Nottingham School Board.
Susan Levinson Nottingham School Board.
All right, the floor is yours.
I'm gonna say to Sue Levinson, as she sits on the facilities committee, and as does Kathy Brosnan.
We had written, asking to come in and talk to you about, just really, any issues that you think we have of mutual interest. But one of the, two of the things that we would like to discuss, one, we had our community forum in September, and there were several questions there about the possibility of shared space. Have you explored that with the town? What do you think you could do? So we thought we should just have that conversation. And as you know, we are still continuing to work on our facilities committee, looking at a potential renovation or addition to the school. I brought the concept, most, the current concept, if anyone's interested, you can pass it around or what have you, that we presented in September. And we're going to be meeting on Thursday, Kathy and I and the facilities committee, with the Department of Education, with Amy Clark, that she works on building aid. So in order to get ourselves ready to even propose to the community an addition that would have building aid as a part of it, which is what we would like to do, we need to have about $27,000 roughly in work done with mechanical engineering, some civil engineering and so forth, to come up with the actual cost of this concept. And then, we will be able to take that to the DOE, and hopefully, we'll be able to get building aid. And then our plan is, after that is done, and we find out where we are with building aid, which the maximum amount would be 30%. And it is a competitive process, and we have to compete with other communities. Some, I've been told up north, that may have some very dire situations. So the best thing that we can do is to be well-prepared, have everything, as they refer to it, as shovel-ready. Have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, and submit to them that we're ready to go and that we're efficient. So that's what we're trying to do. So that rolls into the impact fees, and I think the letter that Superintendent had forwarded, a request to use those. And I just received an email today from the planning board, and they've agreed to meet with us January 8th. So we'll be talking to them as well. I don't know, Kathy, if you have anything else?
I was just gonna say that our facilities committee has townspeople, we have a budget meeting, we have a member of the budget committee also that's on our committee. The facilities person in our building is on our committee. We have a couple of teachers, a couple of townspeople, and Sue and I from the school board. And the needs that we're addressing have been noted since 2008 in different studies we've had done with the school. And they don't go away.
So we're basically asking, because you want, you need the money for the impact fees in order to set the plan ahead, so you do go in front of the state that you're ready to go?
Yes.
We're gonna have two potential warrants to the community.
This year?
No, one this year, saying that we'd like to move forward. These are the costs that it will take us to move forward just to get our application ready with the state. We anticipate that will be around $90,000. This $27,000, and I'm rounding a bit, will get us to the point where we can arrive at that number to put on the warrant.
So then $90,000 covers the, covers...
It's gonna be engineering costs and so forth to determine if that ends up being the final concept, and I think we're very close with that, we could still have some slight changes to it, what will it cost to build that? And what will it cost in engineering fees and so forth for us to be ready to apply to the state?
So the 27 is for the...
Preparation.
Preparation, which is...
Get you to a schematic that you can...
So that's architect?
Architectural and design, some civil engineering, looking at wetlands and so forth.
Yeah, and then the 90 is the actual engineering piece of it?
Right.
Okay, got it.
And that all money is fundable through the impact fees, payable through the impact fees?
Our attorneys tell us that they believe it is. We've gone before the planning board in the past on prior requests for similar uses, but we need to go, we haven't gone before them yet with these.
What's the color coding mean on this?
Nothing.
It's pretty.
It's supposed to draw your eye, I guess, to different parts.
Sorry, I've been asked that a number of times.
So where's the expansion piece of it?
The expansion is over to the right. You'll see a corridor there with kindergarten and preschool, and then...
Right there?
This would be an addition, okay. This would be a storage addition.
Actually, I have a few questions. This proposal here, adding, what, four classrooms, is it?
It's adding, it's doing a lot of renovation. It's adding, if you go up to the front of the school, where the kids go in on the far end, that two-story area, it's gonna add a music room to the first floor and a science lab to the second floor.
Okay, so it's gonna be taking up more real estate, so to speak?
It will be taking, it will punch out a little bit in footprint. It's not going up. We've explored that, and the architect has told us that really that the school isn't designed.
You know, the ongoing problem they have at the school right now is that there's no parking, and that we're using a ball field as a parking lot. Here we are, we're putting an addition on the school, but we're not taking care of any of that other stuff.
Right.
So...
That is true.
How do you propose, and then, looking at your addition and all that stuff, doesn't seem like there's any expansion of the cafeteria or kitchen. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So how, a kitchen and a cafeteria, which is already maxed out, gonna support an additional classroom and students?
What our architect has told us is that currently, he's gone in and looked at the queuing and so forth, and he believes, in speaking with teachers and administration and going in and analyzing himself, the queuing through the, that area is workable. They are talking about potentially widening the opening between the cafeteria and the gym. I think initially, the designs called for that to be open, but structurally...
Between the two?
Yes.
What was that, what was the original design?
Way back in 1995.
They were talking about maybe a movable wall or something like that.
Okay.
But that isn't how it turned out.
Obviously, okay. So the student population can support the additional classrooms? Because there's a disparity among grades as far as the amount of students per grade.
Right, and we have that bubble right now, grades five and up. And we're also experiencing incoming kindergarteners higher than what we've had in the past. And the other thing we've been looking at, and this is where everybody can kind of chime in, is we're looking at our preschool... is we're looking at our preschool and wondering when and if we can bring that back, but right now...
That's currently in Northwood?
That's in Northwood.
But it's significant, it's going to change significantly as one of the sending towns is pulling out. This is Stratford's last year in the preschool.
So how will that impact us?
It's gonna cost us more.
Because another town is not contributing?
That's correct.
That's correct. Well, not just not contributing, their kids won't be there.
Are we saving money by pulling that back here?
We believe, we need to...
Aside from the structure, but...
We would need to figure that out, because the Stratford piece has happened in the last three months. So this started before Stratford decided that they were no longer going to participate in the pre-K next year. And educationally, the best thing for any town is to have their preschool in their town.
Oh, I agree, I highly agree with that. I'm just wondering the cost benefit, I mean, we're talking about putting an addition on and we're not doing anything for the support aspect of it, the cafeteria, the kitchen, the parking lot, the grounds and all that other stuff. And yet we're gonna continue to keep adding on. At some point...
We don't, we don't disagree with you, but we also have to put together something that will be supported.
And what, I heard a price tag roughly five million, is it five million?
Roughly five million, and you'd have about 30% with your building aid from the state if, if it's given to us.
And obviously there's no guarantees. And how reliable has that been that the state come forward as far as grant money?
I believe it's reliable, it's just a question of it being a competitive process. We'll know more Thursday, and we wanted to say if there's anybody who would like to join us Thursday and hear this firsthand, it'll be four o'clock in the library.
And all these designs that they put forth, I see it's Concept 5, so you have different, five different variations? All of them include septic upgrades and well and...
Right now, they're looking at all of those mechanicals. One of the things that we found out in the last three years is that the systems sitting on the roof are actually 10 years older than the actual building. So we've been putting money into our capital reserve funds to support replacing those piece by piece. We've worked really hard to improve air quality, we had problems with insulation, we had problems over the attic area where the students are, we did a lot of work there to improve air quality. We've done work with security and safety at the front area by putting up glass. Our architect proposes that that come back a bit to be even more secure. So we've got all of those issues. We've got labs that don't support the next-generation science standards completely, so we need to, that would be a very good area for us to upgrade. We're looking at preschool, another area, Childfind is part of preschool, it's legally required, so you have to seek out your students in ages three and four to ensure that if they need services, you're starting early. Our Childfind is currently down in Northwood, if you look out, the posting is in Northwood, so people are bringing small children there. If the children need services, they take buses and we have to pay for those buses to go there, so there are a lot of other costs to consider.
And is kindergarten all time, all of it, all the full time? And will preschool be considered half-day?
You have two sessions, you have your three-year-olds and your four-year-olds, and you have a mixture of students that require services and other students that do not. And I think that as a board, we would probably be looking at different models and trying to see how many students we can handle locally. Right now, if you look at some of our enrollment numbers, we have fewer students enrolled. And I think it's just because of, some of it could be the distance.
Enrolled in...
It's going to Northwood?
In the preschool.
Going to Northwood. Step-by-step.
What's the, I know you've shared them with us before, but what's, what's kind of like the enrollment projections that you're working off of now?
We have some, they're currently being worked on, we're expecting them within the next couple of weeks. We had hoped to have them earlier than this, so it's not certain at this point, but right now we're, I believe we're at 525, which is an increase.
And that, is that projecting out?
That's what we currently have.
But is that study also projecting out? Okay, that'd be cool to see if we can...
So when you say projecting out, are you doing a year at a time or is it like five years down the road?
About five to 10 years.
Five, 10 years, okay.
Also, I mean, this doesn't have to do with the request per se, but, so the town's been through this?
I'm sorry?
The town has been through this, right? And rejected it? What do you think is gonna be different this town that the time that the town might be more likely to accept it?
Well, I think the last time that we did it, it was, it was a good plan, it was around $4 million. I believe some of the criticisms that we heard, that people were more interested perhaps in having a middle-school type environment as opposed to the four classrooms that were recommended at that time. This plan is a plan that we believe is going to benefit all the students, so you're going to be able to offer enrichment. The townspeople have indicated that world language is an issue for them, they would like to see us pursue that. We don't have a classroom for it, we would add a world language classroom. Our science scores this year were higher than they have been and they outpaced the state. But again, statewide, science scores don't really, aren't really that great. And that's an area that our curriculum director and our administration is really working hard on. We've seen improvement, those labs being upgraded are gonna support students for these future needs. We have a multi-tiered support or RTI in our school. We have limited space for tier-three pullouts, this plan provides for that. So you're balancing science needs for all students, you're balancing enrichment, you're balancing tier-three needs, so the school would function, I think, more smoothly for all students. Do you guys have any thoughts on that?
I was just gonna say, and we would add an area for preschool, which again benefits the entire town.
What's the projection as far as how long this addition would accommodate the amount of influx of students?
We don't have...
Coming back to us and saying we need a new building or another addition?
When we take a look at the enrollment projections, we'll have a better idea. We think that this should accommodate for the, at least for the near term, we do believe that. We only have three classes per grade, currently we don't have that.
What's the average class size right now?
Depends on the grade.
Obviously, because we got a bubble between five and eight.
Yes, but we have some...
So some of the, I'm sorry, go on.
I was just gonna say that I think it's three of our classes are 25 or 26.
We have a few that are 27.
I actually brought it.
But, and we are in contract negotiations with our teachers and they're very concerned about a classroom with that many students in it without additional support.
So what do they have right now, a teacher and an aide?
No, no.
Just a teacher?
Yes, just a teacher. The kindergarten, the full-day kindergarten does have an aide in each...
A paraprofessional.
A paraprofessional.
We have, I think, 21 or 22 paraprofessionals that are in student services roles, and I think we have...
Three.
Three regular education paraprofessionals and they're supporting the kindergarten classrooms.
So what is that middle group we're looking at?
It's just coming right at you there, it's grades five, six, seven, eight. And that also hits you on tuition with high schools, because you're tuitioning those students.
And is Dover going up?
Yes.
Everything goes up, oil...
But we had a meeting with Dover just about a month ago and they brought it down for us because...
So the increase is lower than it was going to be?
Than it was going to be.
Still gonna be an increase though.
So I see a larger group of six, seven, and eight.
Yes.
You did an enrollment, you brought an enrollment projection a couple of years ago that had you down 20% in seven years?
Right.
Yeah.
Two different enrollment projections, one was way, big overshoot. This last one, when we looked at it more closely, NSDAQ have looked at the entire SAU, so it, I don't know...
Oh, was it SAU?
Yeah, they had included some other growth rates in there, so...
And those have been shown negatively by the actual children that are showing up in our kindergarten and preschool.
So we have had that bump in kindergarten this year. So we're, and we're seeing again, in our Childfind areas for preschool, another bump.
What about, I mean, if you get this $26,000 or whatever, then we get to the point where we're gonna pay another $90,000. And then it goes in front of the town where it gets rejected, so that money is gone.
But the only way to, the only way to get the state to fund us is to expend this money prior to them saying yay or nay to us, so it's a...
I think we'll have a much better pulse on that when we speak with Amy Clark on Thursday. She'll explain to us exactly what's needed, I mean, we know procedurally what is required, but it will be good to hear from her.
If the money didn't come from the impact fees, what would you do?
For the $26,000?
Yeah.
We'd have to, we're gonna have to talk about that, it would have to come out of the budget.
Okay, do you, how much of a surplus do you guys have?
Right now?
Difficult to know, they're now encumbering.
What did you turn back?
New software system and unfortunately, we really haven't been consistently seeing financial reports. So things are being placed, put in and encumbered as we go and we're hoping to get a better feel for that.
706, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Different fiscal year, they're in a new year now, they're in, they're July to June, so...
We returned a lot.
You returned a lot, I mean, that's some of the funds you could have used for studies and...
When we were looking at our numbers in May and June, we didn't, we were not aware that it was, I think we thought, our reports were showing about $300,000.
We've, we've, we've had a personnel issue for months now.
What, trying to fill positions kind of issue?
Nope, nope, sorry.
Is it SAU?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So the SAU has been short-staffed and on top of that, they were rolling out a new program. And sometimes you'll roll out new software programs in parallel, they rolled out a new software program and started using it, and it hasn't been, oh, I think at the end of the day it'll be robust and it will, it will be user-friendly, but right now, they're learning as they're going.
So it...
That's why we're holding off.
Yeah, that's funny to see how badly we're stumbling.
Good, good plan, Chris.
So coupled with the personnel issue, which happens to be in that area, it's kind of stymied our ability to do things.
But we were, I think, our audit is still not complete. The Audit Committee is going to be meeting in the next week or two with the auditors and we do intend to go through the unassigned fund balance and really try to understand exactly where that came from. We did have additional revenues, but it is higher than we had...
Expected.
Expected.
I'm sure I'll have some more questions, but I don't have any right now.
Going back to the SAU with Stratford pulling out, and there's just three communities in the SAU, right? So it's us, Northwood, and Stratford.
Wait, they're not pulling out of the SAU?
Yes, they are trying to.
They're filing here.
They're gonna form their own?
They've undertaken a study, there's a statute out there that allows a district to undertake a study, to put a committee together, it simply evaluates your cost structure. I think it's rather instructive for a district to do it, look at where your costs are and determine if you can do it in the same cost-effective manner. They, they brought their plan forward to the, to the Board of Education and it was unanimously approved by them. They'll bring it to their voters in March, they need a majority, more than a majority, they need, I think, what, 60?
I think they need a supermajority.
They need a supermajority on that, we'll see if they get it. If they do, we're currently paying 39.5, something like that. It's based on ADM, Average Daily Membership, and your valuation, our evaluation is higher than Northwood's, so... There's a report that they placed out on the SAU website that you can look at, it's the Stratford Report. They estimate there'll be, I think I said, they said a $180,000 increase potentially. They were given a tentative plan by the Superintendent just to roughly say what the SAU would look like, what the structure would look like. That would obviously have to be approved by the Joint Board. And that possibility that was put forward to them would cost an additional 170 or 180 and then you'd have to understand the, the way that we would share it with Northwood, but we have higher enrollment and we have higher valuation, so it's likely, I believe they estimated that we'd be paying about 60% of the cost at that point.
For no change in services, obviously. So would that, would that involve reductions at the SAU, would the Joint Board wanna...
The Joint Board needs to, I think, when it reorganizes, Stratford will still be present for a year as the restructuring goes on, if they do in fact go, if the townspeople vote for it.
Would it seem like if they're supporting one whole less town and school, that there should be some reduction in costs?
More space.
Yeah, because they were looking at a new facility a while back, that they obviously wouldn't need that if they...
No, we were looking to rent a different place.
Yeah, they can't own anything.
They can't...
Right, 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 but I mean, they were looking at outgrowing that space over...
No, it wasn't outgrowing it, it was getting a building where they can drink the water.
That's always important, too.
Yes.
And have wifi, and yeah, it's, yeah, it's not outgrowing it.
Yeah, so I mean, that's where my question is going, is if we would be carrying 60% of the administrative burden of the SAU, is it worth us staying in?
We have to undertake a study, that's something that the Board would need to discuss. I think, I think there's some negativity sometimes around the study, but I personally don't, I just see it as looking at your options, understanding your cost structure better, looking at what you're really doing with your resources and, you know, understanding it, so...
And it's a whole different ballgame when you only have two-thirds of what you had the year before, then you have to reinvestigate everything from scratch, because it's not three, divided into three parts, it's only divided in two parts. So, so many things that you take as a given are gone, you know, they changed.
Hence the 60%, huh?
But regardless of if they, regardless of whether they leave the SAU, they, they're gone from the, from the preschool. So those are two different processes. So they are 100% gone from the preschool as of 2020, 21. This is their last year.
Right, September is the...
Even if they stay in it?
Even if they stay in, they're done with the preschool.
How many, how many kids all, all together in the preschool?
I, actually, I just...
Do you have that?
I, I do, if you give me a second, I'll tell you.
So these impact fees, the $26,000, that's just for the school or is that for a recent fire or two? Or is that a separate part underneath the same umbrella?
Correct.
That's a quick Rutland sketch, if you're interested in that. I usually try to bring everything, but I don't think I brought Joint Board.
So there are, Stratford has 20 step-by-step students, Nottingham has 17, and Northwood has 32.
Where do, where do they have it?
It's in Northwood School.
It's in the school, okay.
Yeah, they have a basement room apparently there and...
And the reason they have so many children is because they tuition in some of their children in their town to be typical students in the, in with the, children with special needs. Every, the best way to teach children with special needs is for them also to be typically developed.
So the kids in the preschool are all kids with special needs?
No, it's 50/50.
No, 50/50, it's supposed to be 50/50, but there are a lot fewer people in the towns of Stratford and Nottingham who are willing and able to take their young children for a couple hours a day because they, they don't have a bus for, for them to go to that school. But if it's right in your town, it's much easier.
Got it.
So that's why their number is seemingly so much higher.
Got it, yep.
So I think this year, check me on this, 161 is what we'll be paying for the preschool?
Yes.
Last year, we paid 165, almost 166. Northwood was getting $24,000 in rent, so they would contribute to the rent, Stratford and Nottingham would contribute, they've waived the rent. And then there are funds called IDEA funds, and the SAU has proposed that we use, I think, $40,000 in IDEA grant funding toward that budget. $40,000 in IDEA grant funding toward that budget. So it brought the preschool budget down. Of course, you have to give up some of your IDA funds to do that. So based on that, we'll pay 161 this year instead of 165. But that's this year, so. The question is, can we do it for that price? And I think, we think we can, but where would we put it?
So when do you need to know by, about these impact fee funds?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
We need to have the architect go forward and we need to have everything ready for the March vote. And so in order to have it ready for the March vote, I believe we have to have everything ready by the end of January.
Yeah, he's working on it. They've, they've brought in the mechanicals and they had to do it before the snow. They've sent someone in before the storm, the last storm that we had. So they are working on it, on the 26,000 part. About the shared space, though, that's one thing we haven't touched on. I mean, would there be potential for shared office space here? Or is there any, I know people were really very keen on that. At the, I heard, I heard three or four people mention it.
They were looking for storage as well.
Yeah, storage or...
No, because one of our issues is there's not a lot of storage in the building. And you can see that we've eked out storage spaces all around because a classroom has to have lots of stuff in it to address everybody's needs. And, you know, you wanna keep it close. But the information...
Are there usable spaces in here? I think that's what everybody's asking. No, I didn't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Because people were saying, oh, there's, there are empty classrooms in the town hall.
I think there are townspeople who think that, that there are spaces here and why would we build...
People think that because of the, the backside of this building, which is...
Yes.
It's not suitable for human occupation.
Can you please say that again? You would, you would be surprised at how many people are like, wait, but why are we doing this when you have room at the town? And we're like, we don't think actually we can use it.
They even mentioned that we could have a couple of classrooms here. And I said, I don't think so.
Have you seen back there?
No, I haven't.
You wouldn't wanna go back there without a respirator.
Right.
Okay.
So we shouldn't, so we shouldn't put preschool students back there?
You're better off tearing it down. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've had plenty of discussions on what that thing should do, so I'm sure the discussion's gonna keep going, but...
Yeah, we, we've actually been working this year on, you know, sort of inventorying and assessing all the town-owned spaces. And they all need work. Like even the old town hall, for example, we had to close it down because of electrical and fire safety issues. So, you know, there was a daycare or something in there.
Yes.
And that had to, that had to go away because the, the building couldn't be occupied.
Well, to do our due diligence, we needed to ask you about that, you know.
So even if we were to put work into a space here, are you saying you think that it would not be suitable for a preschool or students?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We don't even have the restroom facilities.
No.
That would support that.
Okay.
So that we have the physical land, we could, you know, we have land.
Correct.
But I don't think we can add any more functions to this building.
Okay, thank you.
That are school-ready.
Okay.
We can subject our employees to some things that we can't subject schoolkids to, so.
Okay.
We, we could, if you wanna talk about land, you, we, we could probably talk about land, but none of the indoor spaces are viable.
Pitching pump tents in the winter, probably not a very good idea either.
I, we, we've got the old town hall, we've got the old fire station garage, we've got the second floor of the old town hall. We've got plenty of surplus, unmaintained legacy space, but...
So if storage is the, is a concern, you know, what about just this budgeting for some storage containers outside temporarily until you just come up with something as far as an addition or whatever that comes down the pike?
We have done that. We've, we've purchased some sheds and we have those, but we...
What do you need to store? What is...
Oh, schools have so many materials.
Is it, it's educational materials that you're using, not, not records or...
Not today, but next month.
The Nottingham Youth Association stores their things in, in the gym, gym area because they need to have...
In our locker rooms. No showers, no locker rooms usable now because they're storing things there that are needed.
But there, there are things that you're actively using. It's not archives or...
No, no.
As far as...
Well, that, you know, that, that kinda stuff, we might be able to, stuff that you don't need to get to, we could probably gin up space for, you know, it wouldn't be conditioned space. It wouldn't be easy to get at. If it was things that you just had to keep because of loss and you had to keep them, or three years from now you're gonna need it, we, that's the kinda, we, we might be able to help you with that, but there's nothing that's readily accessible that you, you know, oh, it's, it's, it's time to turn over the, the gym programs for spring.
Yeah.
Right? Bring in your spring equipment and put away the, whatever that is. I don't think we have much that would be useful to you there. Certainly nothing that's secure.
Okay, well, that's another question.
You know.
Just table, tables, big, big, the long cafeteria tables. Those have to be out or just pushed against the wall. The chairs, if you have things like the deliberative session, all the chairs that come out and then the tarp that has to go down on the floor. So all of that has to be stored.
That's, that's gotta be in the building, though.
Right, right.
You can't trunk that across town.
Just put it, right.
Yep.
And we've taken up a lot of the, we took a janitorial closet and we made it into a student services room. We added a window to it and we kind of...
Geez, that must be a big closet.
It was, it was a big janitorial closet on the second floor. It still has an area where the supplies, the janitorial supplies are kept, but we've built a wall around that and put a window in. So these are the kinds of things. We've got another area that has a ladder against the wall that accesses the roof, and that's an area that we are trying, we are using, we put desks, you know, teachers' desks in. We've got...
What's the fire code?
They, they inspect everything, but, but...
They've been, they were here just last week.
They're pushing at everything that we can possibly use. We, we even asked, can we do something under the stairwell? And you can't do that. So, but we thought...
But we have tables.
It's called the Harry Potter rule.
Yeah.
Tables in the little corner.
So we're talking about storage now, but just go back for one second. The design that we're looking at there, is that going to add storage?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to show you where some of these?
I remember looking at it. I just wanna reiterate that it does add storage. I know where the kindergarten's are going in the back. I know the science...
Yeah, well, and behind the gymnasium between, like, that corner there, there's a storage unit with 329 square feet.
Not even that much, but sure.
You know, there's PE storage over here for 175 square feet.
So that, that one off the gym there?
Yes, sir.
Can accommodate everything, like the chairs and the, the tarp on the...
Hopefully, or at least some of the PE storage can come out of the locker rooms, bless you, locker rooms and showers and go into that and this.
My office is a little too big.
And there's also going to be more cafeteria storage, 178 square feet.
Hey, Nottingham's growing. It's a matter of time whether to do it now or do it later. Town's not getting smaller.
Well, and, and the kids.
And honestly, our, our schools rankings have shot up and real estate agents are saying that Nottingham is really good.
All the new developments are selling out. They're not sitting there for years. They're going.
Absolutely. And I hear that houses are going on the market and being sold within five, 10 days.
Oh, you see it so fast. I just saw a 21-square-foot house over on Maple Ridge for $460,000. So the, the prices are, are...
Yeah.
Which, which drives up our valuation, which in some cases ends up costing us more when you look at how we pay for the SAU, so.
So do they need our permission to spend the 26,000?
Yes.
And you need a decision tonight? Was that what you were looking for?
That would be wonderful.
That would be great.
That would be great. We still have to go in front of the planning board as well, I think, as a courtesy.
I, I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, thinking back to the last time this came up, you know, the, the strongest counterargument is gonna be that the, the growth that would justify using impact fees just isn't there. That's what we heard last time, so.
24 new students in, in less than a year, though? In a school that's only got 500?
Oh, I, I get that. I, I get that. And I know how it ebbs and flows, you know. I saw that year after year, what, you know, all the years I sat on the Budget Committee. So I, I understand how the, how the population fluctuates. But that was, that was, that was the argu, the counterargument last time.
We can deliberate this all of ourselves, 'cause you could say, look how many new houses are being built now. It's not the population's fluctuating because, you know, the houses are staying the same. I mean, the land's being sold, the developments are going in. Even though as we stricken our development standards at times, it's still not stopping the planning board. I mean, you can go look in the planning office over there and see how many new houses are being set up on that board that are people subdividing. It's, it's grown. Then the school's 25 years old. My opinion is give the 26,000. That's, I'm just throwing that out there as where I stand on it. And I don't mind just publicly stating that now. It's something where, you know, as we look forward to the future, it's something where do it now or do it later.
And I, I'd also like to say that having a full-day kindergarten also changes the number of students that are going to be fed into the school. So we have the full-day kindergarten. We have these new fantastic scores. We're in the top...
We're in the top five for our middle school. And we're in the top, I think we're ranked 50th out of 233 students overall, but we continue...
So I think the two, those two things mean that we're gonna get more students coming into our full-day kindergarten and staying. So people are not going to be taking their kids to the private schools. People are not going to be moving because they wanna get into a better school district. This is the district to be in. We have, you know, a great school district. We have great value for your money. I mean, the, the people in town are amazing. So I definitely think that our school is going to grow.
What's the impact of homeschool? Is there any impact? Do we feel any?
Not very many.
Yeah, I think we've, yeah, I think we've held constant, yeah, over the last five years.
I think we have 10 in high school and maybe 14 in the, in the elementary school. So it's not that, that much.
And there's a strict oversight on that to ensure that they're meeting the curriculum of...
Nope.
No?
No, not in the state of New Hampshire.
No. The DOE has some oversight, I believe, on that.
Yes, but that has nothing to do with us.
We don't locally have anything.
Okay.
The state of, of New Hampshire does not, does not ask, or we don't get involved at all. What does happen is that if they want to use any of our facilities, they are absolutely entitled to do so. So we have homeschool students who will come in to do science labs or to go on field trips or to do music. And we are, we are open to that because it's their school also. But we, we provide no oversight.
Interesting.
There's very little oversight academically.
There's no oversight from us. We don't know what the state of New Hampshire does.
None from us. But the state of New Hampshire does very little oversight on homeschools.
Just to completely answer your question, 15 in Nottingham Elementary and 11, excuse me, 10 in the high school. So overall, in the, in our district, including high school, we have 813 students.
Okay.
Yeah, thinking back to last time, I know we had some opinions from the attorneys and I, I think I, I for one would feel better if, you know, if your attorney got with Bart and gave us a blessing, an opinion that, that was, you know, supported that choice.
You'd like our attorney to write something up that they support the use of the impact fees?
We've had that passed, yeah, but we haven't...
We've got something similar from Alaska around on that.
We do?
Yes.
It was, well, it was comparable and then it was soft costs for a potential project.
Yeah. We can review that. I mean, it was, it's the same situation, right?
It's comparable, yeah.
So, and there haven't been any statutory changes between then and now?
No, nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, the hesitation for you is that, and the, and the criticism that you heard last time this came up was that the, the point of impact fees is to apply the, apply to the new, new development, the costs that those new developments create. So those things have to be proportional to the cost of an overall project.
Right.
So would this, this would meet that standard then, right?
Um, I, I don't know. I think you, you should think about it in terms of, is it proportional? Now, this is, this, we, we have, I don't know, 50...
Does this amount wipe out the entire impact fees?
No, no, there's a couple hundred thousand in there.
Okay.
Um, that is, it rolls, you know. We're in, we're in the process of spending, sending back unspent impact fees. So it rolls over six years. So you have to be sure that the, that the expense is, is appropriate. The question of what happens if, if it doesn't turn into new capacity? I think we need an answer on that. You, you may, if the capacity doesn't materialize, you spend this money, those taxpayers have paid for extra capacity and the capacity doesn't materialize, do those people need to be, do those escrow accounts need to be made whole as a result?
Yeah, but the question is, when we set this plan, we do, they do all this work. That plan never goes away. There's gotta be a timeline on how good that plan's for.
No, that's not true. There was a plan before.
Again, I don't know. I'm asking the question. Isn't there a timeframe for it? Well, I'm saying if they put the money, it's a total of 96,000, get all the things done, right? The whole engineering plans and everything done so that they're quote-unquote shovel-ready. Those plans don't go away, or do they?
Do they expire, isn't it?
Well, again, how long does this expire?
Don't know.
Town's been through this whole process, though. Back in...
2000, is it 2008, I believe?
Yes, a long time ago.
It seems like it was, couldn't be that long ago.
Was it? Okay.
Yes, it was 2008.
So those, those are the kinda questions, the, you know, those are questions I think we need to get you answers for. If you wanna delve into it, this is not a huge amount of money, but those are, I, I have to bring those things to your attention. And I, and I had to tell you that enrollment is essentially flat since the building was opened. I think you've had a bump this year. But new development is not creating new students at a very large pace, at a, you know, at a brisk pace. You're, you know, the total enrollment is very similar to what it was, kind of 12 years ago, right?
But if they're pulling back preschool, that does add to...
That is a programmatic change. It's not, it's not development. It's not, there's not 50 new houses, so you have to build a new classroom. That's the theory behind impact fees. It's a programmatic change. You know, going from half-day to full-day kindergarten is a programmatic change. It's not caused by development. It's caused by a change in the program. So those are the kinda questions. You may or may not wanna weigh those things, but I think you, I, I have to tell you that those are factors that you should probably consider. Especially if you get to spending large amounts of this money. 'Cause this is, this is escrow accounts for 50, 60 taxpayers. It's, it's, you know, these are associated with specific taxpayers, those, those accounts. So I have to throw those things at you. You can ignore them if you, if you wish, but...
So why don't we, you know, we got another meeting before the first of the end of the year, right?
Yes.
And you need some sort of...
You know, we, whatever works with your schedule, but it would be good if we could get any answer on it. One thing I would say about the, the new developments, they're still, they're still being sold. You know, Maple Ridge is large. If you drive through there, you do see young children walking around. We need to somehow quantify that, which we're working on. But we can see that we are experiencing enrollment increases in our kindergarten. We went from 48 students to 60 students this year. And it...
And initially, the projection was 42, right?
So some of this, some of this stuff on the plan, though, some of it seems to be related to space, but some of it seems to be related to upgrades, right? Like upgrade of the science lab. That's not driven by development.
Like any, like any addition, you're trying to improve your outcomes and you're looking at your space and trying to make the best use of it. So some of it would upgrade.
Can you delineate between what's really, what part of it is due to space because of growth and what's upgrade?
We're adding enrichment. We're adding preschool.
But world language isn't, world language isn't because of... But world language isn't, world language isn't because of growth, world, to Chris's point, it's, it's a programmatic change.
What we're trying to do, if you look at it, is that every single grade will have three classrooms, so that's spreading out the population. Right now, we have a couple of grades that are down to two classrooms, trying to accommodate this situation for the larger classrooms. We've added more kindergarten, um, we started out with...
Two.
Couple of half-day programs, and now we're up to, do we have three or four? We have...
We have four.
Four, four full-day kindergarten classrooms right now, so, to accommodate all 62, I believe, of these students, so those are the kinds of things. Where did those extra students come from, from 48 to 60 or 62? Um, we're not seeing bumps every year from kindergarten to first grade, so one could say, well, people are keeping their kids out and putting them into private kindergarten and so forth because they have to work, but you, every year you would see that, coming into, you'd have an increase in your first-grade enrollment over your kindergarten, we're only just now seeing it, so we believe it is attributed logically to additional growth.
But you're only seeing it for one year, though.
Right.
So you really don't have the track record to say...
We need to start seeing a trend, but we are seeing it now in preschool with the children that have been brought forward, um, through Childfind. We've got, I think, another dozen, they indicated to us, that are being, uh, looked at right now, worked with, and coming into the educational system, so that's higher than in the past. You, you guys remember those, that, those exact, those numbers? But I think our enrollment projections will be helpful, and I think that the report also, in taking a look at the report from Stratford, they looked at a lot of data sources, and they were showing some numbers in, in Nottingham as well that they looked at, so I'd like to kind of look at those and, and vet them for ourselves as well.
Okay.
That's a brand-new report, so...
Good.
Thank you for considering this.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for listening.
Any, any other questions for the school board?
Kathy, you coming tomorrow night to CIP?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
You've got, uh, the spreadsheets, and I appreciate the roll forwards that you did, that was great, you brought those to a meeting, looked good.
Cool. All right, I guess that's that, thanks for...
Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot.
Tony, Tony, what's your... I'd like to make a motion that we enter non-public per RSA 91-3-a colon 3-2-A-N-D.
Second.
Rule call, vote.
John Warren, yes.
Tyler Reason, yes.
Ben Bartlett, yes.
Tony Dumas, yes.
Donna Danis, yes.
All right, that's the end of our public meeting, we are now in non-public session. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.